Okay, we're called at where the Franklin Regional Board of School Directors Committee to the whole meeting for November 8th, 2021. We're in executive session on 10/25/21 from 5:30 approximately, 7:30 on contractual issue, issue. And we're in tonight, 11/8/21 from 6 o'clock to a couple minutes after 7:30 for contract safety, contractual and legal issue. Superintendent, Dr. Prino.
Good evening. One of my favorite pre-pandemic events was when we brought students in every month to highlight the programs and different things happening in the schools. And really, I think all of us, it helped us refocus and stay focused on why we are all here. And so this evening, we are returning to a sense of normalcy with this. And I'm going to introduce Dr. Santa Mont, who will be talking about our middle school students of the month.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. We really appreciate it. As you know, at the middle school, across the district, we're focusing on the five Cs. And in September, we branched out a little bit and we focused on curiosity. In October, we focused on creativity. For November, we're looking at communication. And December, collaboration. And then as we go into the new year, we'll have our citizenship focus and our critical thinking focus. And tonight, what I'd like to do is to recognize a couple of students that received student of the month. And every month, the house teachers nominate two students that they feel embody the characteristic that we're looking at for the month. And then we send those names out to the middle core teachers and the guidance counselors, and they then vote again on who they believe embody that characteristic. And so for the month, I have the month of September and the month of October that I'm going to announce tonight. I'm going to ask each student to come up to get their certificate to face you. And then after everyone gets their certificate, I'll move them all out into the hall for some pictures. So if I could have Nathan Ferrer come up, he's our sixth grade September student of the month for curiosity. Sophia Orando is our seventh grade September student of the month for curiosity. We don't have Jamison here tonight, but he is our eighth grade student of the month for curiosity. For creativity for the month of October, Evelyn McCozy is our sixth grade student of the Allison Galbraith is our seventh grade student of the month. And Cole Slaggy is our eighth grade student of the month for creativity. So we just like to present these students to you. They do such a great job and they do make the middle school just a great place to be every day. And we thank you for giving us the opportunity to come in and showcase them.
Congratulations. Thank you for coming tonight. You must have homework.
As we look, and Dr. Santa Mont talked about the five Cs, and a lot of times, we know that success is not measured by standardized test scores. The PSSA and the key student exam fall far short of measuring what our students have to know, understand, and be able to do in the real world. We have, we have had it and continue to have even through the pandemic, a heavy focus on giving our students or preparing our students with the skills that would endure beyond the four walls of a classroom and that cannot necessarily be measured by that assessment. When we talk about those five Cs, we have really had a heavy focus on changing instruction so that our students are engaged in critical thinking. Our students are engaged in collaboration with other students to solve real world problems, that our students are thinking creatively. That creative thinking is something that our employers are looking for. That ability to solve problems are things that our employers are working for, are looking for. And when you look at citizenship, that citizenship is something that we, as a community, need for the future. We want to make sure that our students are ready to go back into their communities and provide the leadership to serve local government, to lead in their corporations. And so we've made a conscious effort under your leadership to move in that direction, to de-emphasize what doesn't matter and reemphasize what really does matter. And last week, I had the pleasure of going to CodeToberfest and I sent you folks some videos about kids engaging in that type of learning around robotics. And every day, if you go around this, this district, you can see that happening. And you can not only just see it happening in the classroom or in the innovation centers, you can also see it happening as we work with teachers to develop instructional practices in that area. Our professional development models that. And so it really has been a systemic transformation and wouldn't be possible without the leadership that you have shown over the years and the work of our principals as well and our teacher leaders to make that happen. So tonight, you obviously saw some fantastic middle school students, but it just didn't, this focus and this progress didn't happen in one day or one week or one month.
Dr. Prino. It's if I might comment, I'd like to say that your comments are certainly not falling on deaf ears, that we're well aware of a board, as a board, that there's been a years-long effort to bring the kind of training to our students in the classroom that's both experiential and it can, it's in-depth enough that it's very meaningful. And we see as a result of this, that our graduates are doing many, many fine things and they're, they're having success. They come back and tell us what they've been up to and that they're just doing a great job. Now, we spent a lot of time as we go through the years, seeing how we do relative to other school districts. We see what goes on in Pittsburgh Business Times, we see what goes on in U.S. News and World Reports. And what we see is that's working. That's putting Franklin Regional School District as one of the upper echelon school districts around, particularly in Western Pennsylvania. Now, there's some other very fine school districts in Pennsylvania, in Western Pennsylvania, but we're among the best. And so I wanted to say thank you for all of those efforts. I think they're paying off and I think our students are the benefactors. And I can only hope and wish as we go forward, we just build upon what's going on here. So thank you for the chance to comment.
Thank you. I just want to reemphasize, though, as much as those rankings mean a lot to folks and the test scores mean a lot to folks, we know that those test scores, though, really don't measure the impact of education. And one of the reasons we're looking for new systems of accountability within this organization and because the PSSA score doesn't define a student. And it is one day or unfortunately, too long, too many days of assessment that really, about things that really don't matter. And so as much as we're proud of our rankings and we're proud of the work of our staff, we know that our obligation to students extends well beyond that standardized test score. If you ask me, do I want to give them the five Cs or have high results in the PSSA? I'm going to take the five Cs and giving our kids those opportunities every single time. And so, but I do, you know, don't want to devalue those types of things, but it's not really how we're, we're going. And if you don't mind, I'm going to move this because I.
Well, I didn't, I didn't make the comments I made to try to focus on those kinds of tests. I couldn't agree more that what we're doing with the five Cs is education far and above what those particular rankings show. I just mentioned them because it kind of tells us a little bit about what company we're keeping with other districts.
Well, absolutely. And, and we're seeing those districts and other districts across this Commonwealth also coming out and saying that we need to be doing more for our students. And test prep is not quality education. So that concludes the superintendent's report and.
Thank you, Dr. Prino. Okay, public comments.
Hello, good evening. Susan Elgin Fritz, Mayor Drive, Murraysville. So this evening, I wish to share with you two stories so you can better understand our students and families living in our community. So I'm going to talk fast. My daughters all have mask exemptions that have been accepted by the district but feel pressured by the district to wear their masks. Last Friday, I picked up my daughters after school. My daughter came out of the building wearing a mask. Confused, I asked, why are you wearing this mask? She instantly burst into tears and the conversation ended. After several little conversations over the weekend, I learned she's been wearing a mask since day two of the enforced mask mandate, even with her mask exemption. I learned she has been wearing the mask because in her own words, she said, I don't want to feel lonely. She learned very quickly, if you want to be in the, be with her classmates, then you must wear a mask. So I asked her to explain this a little bit more in detail and she drew me a diagram of her class. So here's the teacher's desk, here's the whiteboard, here was her seat. When she was not wearing the mask, her seat was moved off to the side. So she quickly learned if she doesn't wear a mask, it was moved back. Story two. Last week of the last school year, my daughter came home very concerned and confused. Her teacher showed her a video of the new intermediate school and was concerned with the bathroom signs, which read, boy, girl. After a few days, my daughter brought this topic up again and again and again. So I respectfully reached out to administration, which informed me, one, I'm not aware of this video the teacher shared, would not be able to get the video as the teachers are on summer break, and was informed the bathroom signs were not yet on display. My daughter was actually sitting next to me when we had this conversation, so I asked her again, are you sure there were signs in this video? And she said, yes. After asking to tour the store with my school, tour the school with my daughters to help alleviate her concerns, we were thankful to learn of the open house teacher meet and greet prior to the start of school. My daughter and I specifically made note to the bathroom signs on her grade level floor. One bathroom was marked, girl sign, the other bathroom at the end of the hallway was marked, signed, boy, girl. My daughter was relieved to see this, but just to ensure privacy rights for my daughters, we did request in writing that my daughters only are permitted to use the girl-only bathrooms with only other biological girls. A few weeks later, at the grand opening, I saw the signs were changed on her grade level floor. Why the switch? What other changes have been decided without parent knowledge? After communication with administration, a few board members and also a few incoming board members, it was recommended that I reach out to the architect, which I did, and also counsel for PA Family Institute, which I did. And I now have a better understanding of gender dysphoria and court cases that are occurring in our state. I may not agree with these court rulings and I do not agree with our current setups at the bathrooms at the intermediate school. And we can sit here and debate safety concerns, medical concerns, privacy issues, but as we all know, my daughter's privacy issues should not depend on others. I'm not sold on removing the entranceway door. I'm not sold on widening the entranceway to the bathroom area. I'm not sold on having floor-to-ceiling dividers and doors to the stalls and adding cameras to the sink area. Although I appreciate the effort, I really do, I don't believe your definition of privacy is just that. I believe it could be constructed better and I'm not alone when I say that. And I'm not, and I will continue to voice concern to our state and federal legislatures.
Okay, see, see, that's four minutes.
Okay. I just want to say, the decisions you are making impact real life families in this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Matthew Ackman, 4211 Bulltown Road. I want to start by acknowledging Mrs. Smith of fifth grade and Mrs. Warler, the school nurse, a couple of weeks ago taking care of my daughter, the little incident there. And I just want to give my thanks for that. I want to start this by a quote from Pericles, an ancient Greek general and politician back in the 400 B.C.s. Just because you do not take an interest in politics does not mean that politics won't take an interest in you. Do the children belong to their parents or government? One with common sense would naturally and quickly answer, the parents. But is that where we are? Parents have command and direct responsibility of our children, while we, as parents in a community, allow the school to have supervisory responsibility of our children while the school provides the best possible education in a safe environment. Any issue between the child, parent and school should be rationally discussed and resolved, but so long as no law is broken nor the safety of the child is at risk, the parent has the final say of the child. We, the parents and the schools, find ourselves in conflict here all across the country. Parents of Franklin, parents at Franklin Regional are noticing change in the curriculum and the questions being asked in many of the school assignments. What we're seeing here is the beginnings of the implementation of critical theory in our schools. In short, instead of teaching the students proper science, reading, math, history and critical thinking, education is being filtered through a lens that everyone is viewed by different characteristics, such as race and socioeconomic class. It splits everyone into an oppressor versus oppressed category, and the only way to correct these injustices are through equity, where everyone ends on the same plane. This is specific to the Marxist ideology and the only way to achieve such equity is through total government control. I believe we are starting to see the beginnings of critical theory in our education. I've had discussions with other parents about these odd questions and the students with their assignments. But one, something that was glaring to me is that in my son's seventh grade world history books, it omits Mao Zedong's killing of 30 million people in his Cultural Revolution. We reject critical theory and critical race theory where our children are taught to look at everybody through the prism of race. And we hope that this does not fully implement into our education. And I just ask that we reassess the textbooks and curriculum to ensure that best possible education. Another concern is the sexualization of our children. Throughout the decades, common sense showed us that we separated bathrooms, boys and girls. It cannot get any simpler. There is no benefit to having integrated stalls unless the goal is to teach the lie that there is no difference between boys and girls, literally exposing them to each other. The term to this gender bending and sexualization process is called grooming. Grooming is where you slowly normalize the sexualization of children before their minds and bodies are ready for that stage. Sex education in school was always taught in high school with a very narrow scope pertaining to health and biology. Anything beyond that is the responsibility of the parent. Generalist bathrooms and promotion of such material, which was discussed in the news, 642 Things to Write About, that was in Hudson, Ohio, is a perverse way of taking the ownership of children away from parents. And I believe it is intentional. We must also worry about physical, the physical, children physically being hurt in such settings, as I refer to the girl being raped by a boy in a skirt in Loudoun County. I've been told that court rulings in Pennsylvania, in Pennsylvania are the reasons why bathrooms are designed the way they are.
Matthew, your four minutes are up.
So just in the end, thank you.
Evening. Jamie Ling, Burnett Drive, Murraysville. Some of you may remember, I was here on August 25th to talk to you about the vaccine clinics in the schools. So I expressed my objection to setting up pop-up clinics within our educational facilities. Per the Health and Safety Plan summary by the FRSB under letter G, it states, when possible, the district will continue to partner with federal, state, local, and healthcare agencies regarding opportunities to receive the COVID-19 vaccination. I would like to ask you to consider the following before instituting vaccine clinics in the schools. First, although Pennsylvania law requires consent of the parent of a minor child for vaccines, the Philadelphia Department of Public Health currently allows children ages eight, 11 to 18, to authorize their own immunization without approval or consent of another person if it is to prevent occurrence of a reportable disease, infection, or condition, provided such person is capable of providing informed consent. And to top it off, the healthcare provider may not be sued or held liable if that 11-year-old suffers any adverse reaction. Second, which medical providers will be working in cooperation with the schools administering these clinics? In the online vaccination toolkit for schools, it states that vaccine providers include local health departments, pharmacies, health systems, and other medical providers. Other medical providers is a very broad term, covers a lot of different institutions. So my question is, does that also include Title X providers? So for me, that would be a very slippery slope because that would allow state-sponsored family planning medical providers into the doors of the schools and open an avenue for offering other services by said provider, like birth control or abortions in our school system. Third, a document put out by the WHO talks about the principles of consent and assent. It goes on to talk about different practices for obtaining consent. One would be a formal written consent for opting in or opting out. A second would be verbal consent, which can only be obtained when a parent is present. And the third is implied consent. And this is very important because it seems to be the WHO's option of choice. Parents and quote, "Parents are informed of imminent vaccination through social mobilization and communication, including letters directly addressed to parents. Subsequently, the physical presence of the child or adolescent with or without an accompanying parent at the vaccination session is considered to imply consent." So that means if a vaccination clinic is held at the school and you don't keep your child home, they consider that consent. That, to me, is unacceptable. So all of these points demonstrate how our government is attempting to thwart a parent's God-given right to make decisions for their children through the commission of these clinics. So here is what I propose to do instead of having a pop-up clinic in the school. The best choice, I feel, is to offer no clinics. These vaccines are free at any local pharmacy. And if a medical vaccine provider could bring the drug into the schools in a pop-up clinic, surely they're available in their practice or at the pharmacy. If they're not available, then we need to ask, why not? Why would they only be available in the schools? Why are they targeting our children? If you must institute a vaccine clinic, I would suggest using an off-site facility in the community, like the community center. This would eliminate the potential for confusion and error for parents. Lastly, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and to remind you that medical buildings are for medical procedures and school buildings are for education.
Thank you very much, Jamie. All right, that's the end of public comments.
I'd like to address Ms. Ling's comment. For the next board meeting, could we draft a resolution that says we will not offer the vaccine clinics at our facilities?
Yes, we did.
We did?
Yes.
Thank you. Can we draft a resolution that says we will not offer vaccine clinics at our facilities?
I'm sure we, yes. Solicitor?
I'm prepared for next.
Yeah, we can do that.
Thank you.
Yep. Solicitor's comments.
No comments at this point.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to consent agenda items. Dr. Pines.
The first item, yep, the first item I have is the personnel agenda. And if you look at the attachment, you'll see there's a series of appointments, leaves, substitutes for certified support personnel and supplemental personnel. There is a long list of activity and club sponsors and extracurricular sponsors that are approved for the year. So you may want to make note of those items in particular.
Anybody have any questions on personnel? Okay. Nurses agreement.
Yeah, the second item is an agreement that we do yearly, and this is for nursing services to cover, sometimes it's utilized for field trips and sometimes it's utilized for transportation to Children's Institute whenever one of our regularly staff nurses are unable to be there. So this isn't something that's used every day, it's just used as needed. And this is a company that we have, we have worked with before as well. We actually have two companies that we work with.
Comments on nursing agreement? Okay, we're moving on to public education project-based learning.
This is a contract to get training for some of our teachers for project-based learning. This actually ties in exactly to the five Cs that we are trying to promote across the district. This is a very, very good training and there's been a lot of great feedback for other school districts that have used this. We are planning to use title funds for this training, so this is not going to come out of a district budget fund.
Any questions on public-based learning? Okay.
Have you gotten additional teachers to sign up for that?
We had a few extra sign up, yes, that we were able to accommodate.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. We were not able to do any type of partnership, though, with any other school, but we did get a few more teachers.
Okay, math program.
This is a quote for math manipulative kits for our new program in grades K to eight. When we adopted the program, we weren't sure of the need for this, so we wanted to, wanted to wait. But as we've progressed through the year, it is something that the teachers have expressed a need to have. And because of the timeframe from when our last math curriculum implementation was, there really aren't any full and complete kits to utilize. So these kits contain things like 10 base blocks, clocks, timers, manipulatives that the kids can put their hands on. There was actually a post today that I saw Ms. Gillen put out about kids in a class using manipulatives to learn place value. So it's something that's very, very valuable to them, that allows them to gain a greater conceptual understanding if they have something physical that they can touch. And so the cost for these kits for grades K to five for what is needed is about $21,783.
I have a quick question. So this is something that would augment their normal math curriculum?
Yes.
So as you're going through learning about these various topics, we have something they can put in their hands and work with?
Yes.
All right. It doesn't change the math curriculum, it just augments it?
Yes, yes. It really helps extend and deepen their understanding when they can, when they can have some.
That's a good thing. It's just giving them real-life skills, working with hands-on. Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Pines. Okay, Ms. Cowell. Bus and van drivers, 2021, 22 school year.
For your review tonight, I have an updated list of the A.J. Meyers &amp; Sons bus drivers and van drivers.
Anybody have any questions on the bus drivers? Okay, we're moving on to bus stops.
And there was also a list for you on the most updated bus stops.
Anybody have any questions on the bus stops? That's it. Thank you. Mr. Perry, joint purchasing consortium for gasoline and fuel for 2021, 22.
Good evening. This item is awarding bids for diesel and gasoline for transportation for the remainder of the 2021. of the '21, '22 school year. Since the 1920 school year got interrupted, we've essentially been off-cycle with purchasing fuel. We had remaining gallons contracted for the 1920 year that were used at the beginning of last school year. We had already bid the 2021 fuel gallons when the pandemic shut down the schools in 1920. So, we had a full year's worth last year that we're just finishing up using now. So, this is about 50 to 60% of our annual usage that we're bidding right now to finish the 21, '22 year. And then we anticipate bidding in the springtime, the gallons that would be required for next school year, '22, '23, which is more typical of the timeline.
John, considering what's been going on, and I think we're all aware of the gas pump prices, what percentile are we looking at an upswing based on what you did versus what the real world is of today?
Well, our diesel price is $2.55 and a fraction. That's an increase of about 20% as compared to the prior contract amount. Obviously, it's far less than what's on the street because the district doesn't pay taxes. Even without those taxes, it's a little bit less than that. And on the unleaded gasoline, it's $2.60 a gallon. Again, it's probably about 20 cents less than what's on the street even after you remove the taxes associated.
Thankfully, we get a cut break, but in real dollars and cents, what does that actually cost us on both, both of those items?
Well, our contractor pays the first $1.90 on this and we have about, we're contracting 45,000 gallons of the diesel fuel, so at roughly 65 cents a gallon, you're looking at maybe $30,000 for the remainder of this year, which is in line with our budget, and $20,000 for, or $20,000 gallons for the unleaded gasoline. Again, there's about 90 cents there, or I'm sorry, about 70 cents, so $15,000 roughly.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, the old Homestead-Farmstead.
This is an annual approval to have the Westmoreland County Department of Assessments mail out the required application for Homestead-Farmstead. This year, the cost is 70 cents per application. That's up 4 cents from last year due to increased cost of postage, but that's the all-in cost and we think represents a good value as opposed to having the school district prepare and mail all those applications out.
Questions on Homestead-Farmstead?
Next is the monthly budget transfers. General fund transfers in the amount of $25,813.67 and athletic fund transfers in the amount of $289.
Any questions? Okay, gifts and grants.
Finally, we have $127 to the Fund-A-Meal Program from FR staff and $6 towards the Franklin Regional Middle School from the Anderson Corporation. Thank you.
Mr. Perry. Okay, Mr. Schreckengauz. Digital fax lines.
Good evening. I have one item on the agenda tonight. That is the conversion of our plain-old telephone lines to digital fax lines. This conversion will save us around $300 a month. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Matzie.
Good evening, everybody. This is for additional signage required by the code officer for around the school at intermediate school.
Any questions on signs? Okay, GC024.
This is for a credit for not putting in glass in the library at the intermediate school around the counter. We didn't feel it was necessary fixture and it was a savings.
Any questions? GC025.
Next item is additional door hardware for a section of the intermediate school that leads back to the music area. When the areas of the, if you create a hallway with the partition walls, there's a set of double doors there. If there's a true emergency, the magnets release and shut those doors. There's no way to get back there if we need to get back there unless we go out through the gym or back through the LGI. We're requesting to put a cylinder on that door so anybody could be able to get back there if there was a true emergency.
Any questions? Okay, GC040.
This is to give permission to Glancy that did it over excavation at the intermediate This was to be done by Mucci, which is the following change order, and it's just going to be a wash with one company doing it and the other company not doing it.
Any questions? Okay, GC026.
That's the, that's what I made reference to. That's the credit that's going to be paying Glancy that Mucci didn't do the work and Rob Glancy's company did the work.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Consent agenda items. Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
Seventeen.
I don't have seventeen, I'm sorry. I don't have seventeen. Okay, change order 015.
This was to do grading at the primary school around the playgrounds, work that needed to be done to make it a safe area back there.
Any questions on the playground? Now, we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Hold on, favor. Aye.
Aye.
Those motion carries. Thank you, everybody.